Again, one more time.
One more time.
All right, awesome. Called to order the school committee meeting, September 11th, 2025.
Steph, can you please pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Mr. Fisher?
Here.
Yes.
Mrs. Mastercola?
Here.
Mr. Witczek?
Here.
Mrs. Serena?
Here. So just to start off this meeting, I'd like to just have a moment of silence for everyone affected by nine eleven. I know this is a solemn day in our country's history, but so if we could just take a few minutes, a few seconds and have a moment of silence, thank you. Thank you. Just a couple reporters superintendent, just superintendent reporter, the school committee chair, just a couple things. So October 4th of this year, I believe it's a sad day.
It's a sad day.
We'll be, we're gonna, at 10 o'clock, we're gonna have a dedication of the new complex. We've never had a dedication of the new complex because the fact it was during COVID, so we've never memorialized anything. So Dr. Scuzzarella is putting this together, so we'll do that on October 4th at 10 o'clock. Following that, we're gonna have the raising of the athletic banners. We have new banners for the athletic teams at the gym. We'll do a raising right after that, so the more the merrier. Really, just not much. I know it's on the agenda tonight, but I just wanted to talk about the busing. Listen, we're still working things out with busing. There's mandatory riders and the mandatory riders are given to us by the state, okay? So what we consider a mandatory rider is what the state tells us as a mandatory rider. As far as the two mile rule, that's a state mandate also. So when you say, "I live a mile and a half away," that's good, but the mandate's two miles. And as far as that goes is, I think all of us up here, I lived a mile and a mile, 1.7 miles from the school, and we found a way to get our kids there. And yeah, we'd love to have 50 buses, we don't, okay? It costs more money for buses, we have to make a decision, teachers or buses? We decided on teachers. And really is, I think we're doing a good job of, hey, what mandatory riders are taking this bus, what mandatory riders aren't? We'll work that out and we'll get people, we'll get more people on the bus. Listen, I read something about a petition out there, that's great. You can get a million signatures, it doesn't change anything. We have a problem, it's a bus problem. You can keep telling me what the problem is, it's not gonna change anything. Bring me a solution. Bring me something that fixes it, right? Because at the end of the day, we're all up here looking a way to fix it, and like I said, is, signatures are great, you could give me a paper with a million signatures on it, it's not gonna change anything. If that paper comes with another $100,000 or another $200,000, that would change things. So I just wanted to say that, and it's like, like I said, everyone up here had to get their kids to school. You know, Tommy has a bunch of kids that go to different schools. Ryan gets his daughter to school, Steph gets her son to school, John did it. We found a way, right? We carpooled, we figured it out, so that's all I want to say on that, and that's really all I have right now. I don't know if anyone else up here has anything.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
A report of the athletic subcommittee?
Yeah, it's in the agenda, so.
Okay.
No, it's gonna be after what, after me, he should talk.
Okay, after, it's not in there?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so after the report of the superintendent, we'll keep down all business.
Okay.
So now we'll go to the report of the superintendent.
I just wanted to say that we got off to a relatively smooth start, all things considered. I got a chance to visit all the schools and the classrooms, not all the classrooms, but all the schools. And there's a lot of positivity in the schools, I think, this year, so it's really refreshing to see. And there's a lot of school spirit going on there, like you're talking about the homecoming week and everything that's happening. I don't know, maybe you didn't even say homecoming week, but that first week of October, that week before the dedication, there's gonna be a whole week long celebration on homecoming week at the complex, which is great to see. Kids are excited about it, everybody seems to be very excited.
And we have a band, we have a big band with.
A band's getting bigger, absolutely.
Fifty kids.
Yep. And then also starting off next week is the enrichment program. We have two big programs, one at the Belmonte, one at the middle, one at the middle school. I can't believe they're two different things, that got me. But I got some of the, I got some of the numbers, and we're rolling out something at the, at the vets a little bit later, because they started a little bit later, and there's certain things that are gonna be happening in the high school as well. But I just wanted to give you some of the stats, the Belmonte Steam Academy next week, they have 11 offerings, and they have 211 kids already enrolled for next week. So it's, again, huge turnout. Middle school, 14 offerings, and right now they have about 130 kids register. So, and that only gets bigger once people see it happening and it don't. So the enrichment program's back, up and running. We have our back to school nights coming up, so at the complex, it's gonna be, is it next, next Thursday, the 18th, from 6 to 8? The senior parents, the freshman parents, and the sixth grade parents do have like a little presentation at 5:30 to make them aware of what the differences are. Belmonte Steam Academy's the 17th, which is Wednesday, from 6 to 8, and the vets is the following Thursday, the 25th, from 6 to 7:30. So I did want to mention that to you. The trivia night from the SBC, we had an SBC meeting la, was it yesterday? It was either yesterday or the day before. The trivia night's gonna happen again. It is going to happen on October 16th, which is a Thursday. It's $275 a team, $55 a person, spectators $25, that all covers the food, and then the rest of the money goes to the SBC for dispersal of funds. Trying to think of what else I had, I had a couple of other things. Yeah, that's what I have for right now, there's a couple other things I got to talk about when we're talking about policies and whatnot, so I can go there. I'm good.
Okay.
I gotta come back with a bunch of things for other things.
Refresh my memory on JRA, this policy.
Okay, so if you're looking at the policies, so last, last time, what you did was, there were a handful of policies under the section D, that you were basically just language changes or mandated changes that we had to do, so you voted that. You also voted a policy, and it was a policy that let you vote on policies.
Okay.
So it was a good thing we took that one up finally.
Yeah, no.
JRA is a policy that you've read once already, it's the student record policy.
Okay, okay.
There was a complaint made, and our student record policy did not match what the adjustments have been made, so that's what you're voting on tonight. Right, right now, the policies that you have to vote on tonight would be JRA, which is student record policy, that was just brought up by our compliance up to what it should be.
Yeah, I remember that.
Along with MASC. And the second read of the policies, the section A adjustments, that one is a whole chunk of them.
That were updated, so.
That were updated by what I believe you titled "The Policy Project."
Correct.
So if, and those have all been, those are all at a second read phase, so I have those right here.
But before we get those, before we get to those, we have a report of the subcommittees. I'll start with Mr. Hatch's athletic subcommittee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This afternoon, the athletic subcommittee met for the first time for this school year, and I'm pretty, I'm pretty proud and very happy to report on this committee. Three short years ago, we had discussions of not having teams at different levels in the, at the high school. We even talked about looking at collaborative programs with other schools because the schools, the teams were getting so small. One of those teams being the football team, which would have been pretty tough to take. We already, you know, for many reasons, we don't have hockey, but I have to say, you know, in three short years, what a turnaround. Football team has upwards of 45 kids participating. We have three volleyball teams, not one, three, that are actively participating. Golf was another sport that was in jeopardy. This year, we have 18 kids, 18 golfers. It was pretty exciting. Girls soccer continues to be the successful program that it has been, with, with many girls participating in their success. The boys soccer team at one point was in jeopardy. This year, we have, we had to turn kids away. There's over 45 students participating. It's been amazing. We have added cross country for both boys and girls that didn't exist, so that's pretty exciting. They had their first test match just this week. You know, people before didn't look at it as a sport, but it's a tremendously difficult sport. Our cheer program has exploded. We have competition cheerleaders, as well as now traditional sideline cheerleaders participating in the sport, so it's pretty exciting. You know, we already mentioned it's, it's part of the fine arts program, but with a handful of people in the band, that were just four or five kids at graduation and whatnot, and now we're looking at upwards of 45 kids. So our extracurricular programs have really turned around, specifically the athletic program. I credit our new athletic director, Matt Serena, for what he's done. He is present at every single event. He spends more time with the youth sports recruiting than he, than, than anything. His job has turned into a seven day a week, almost 24 hour day job, and he's done an amazing job. And I think with the leadership of Dr. Scuzzarella, the culture of that whole complex has just changed, so kudos to everybody. I'm super happy to report on this athletic subcommittee and all that good information.
Thank you, Ms. Hatch. So next is a report of the policy subcommittee. What we looked at is a bunch of policies.
Yeah, so I can go, I can go through that, so if you want me to.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So you have the, the two, the single policy, JRA, to vote on tonight. You have the blanket policies, section A from the policy project, those are all there. We sat down, and there's nothing for you to vote on from today, at least for the section D. This, this subcommittee voted to move a bunch of policies, and I can read the, the numbers of the policies. So the sub, the policy subcommittee voted to move forward to the full school committee. Policy DEC, DBG, DBJ, DD, DEC, DJA, DIE, DJA, DJE, and DK were your review.
Can you just get us copies of those?
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna, what I'm gonna do is, I will get you copies of those, and that's something you can do the first read at the next meeting.
Yeah.
But the, the policy subcommittee voted to move those policies forward to you as a whole. They are a little different than the policies that you voted on last time and that you'll vote on today. They have some change in language or decisions that you might need to make, so they're not just a straight adoption or a straight change.
No, because you have to do a budget, so you wanna really.
Absolutely, so what I will do is, I will get you a policy, I will get you a copy of the policies, and you can review them, and the first read should be at the next meeting. The other thing that we did at the policy subcommittee meeting, and this one kinda came up at us, because it came out of the athletics subcommittee into the policy subcommittee, Mr. Serena, strike that, Mr. Matt Serena came forward, and there, right now, as far as using facilities, we have a whole school policy on using facilities, and what kind of, it's really tight, and it really is good, but in practice, there's a couple of things that are a little bit of a glitch there. So if you have youth basketball, for example, they don't have to pay for a porter or anything because they're part of youth and recs, so they have the facilities for practices. Naturally, if it happens on a weekend or it's a game situation, they have, they have to pay. But there are other youth groups that pretty much follow under the same umbrella, that really shouldn't need to require a porter, because they are part of the youth community. So that would include like cheerleading, that would include like if softball or baseball wanted to use the complex and the batting cage, or here for the batting cage type of thing. So they would go through the same type of thing with a rental policy, go through the rental procedure, but they wouldn't have a cost if it was a practice and the building was open, okay? So if it was a game, or it was over the weekend, when the building's not open, they'd have to hire a porter or a cleaner to make sure that the building's open and taken care of. But just from a procedural standpoint, I'd like to move forward and have all the youth groups treated the same. And I will, I will work with Mr. Serena, Matt, to identify the groups that fit those parameters.
So, but we also talked about having a caveat in there, that if.
Oh, naturally.
If it turns into a mess, that you're walking in and it's a mess.
Right.
That they go back to paying for.
They'd have to pay for the porter, naturally, yeah.
Well, I hope we're taking into consideration that they should be gone at least a half hour before the porter is gone, because he needs time to go around, check all the doors, make sure everything's fine before he goes.
Okay.
Can't be walking out the door at the same time everybody else is. You know what I mean? The porter can't walk out the door at the same time the crowd's leaving.
Oh, no, no. Agreed, agreed, yes.
So that's, that's something that's gotta be stressed to everybody.
Okay, absolutely.
Not 15 minutes extra, 20 minutes extra, you gotta leave when you leave.
Right, okay.
So do you want to do that as a first read tonight?
You could do it as a first read, or you could, yeah.
Well, let me, you guys, you wanna do it as a first read or you wanna wait? Like, I'll put it out to you guys, because I think we should take a look at it.
Yeah, we should take a look, but no one has any copies.
No, but that one, we, that one just, that one just came through two committees. I'm announcing it to you as, as the third committee, but it's out there, we'll get the language written up for you.
Yeah, so we'll put, we'll put those in the budget ones for first read, next meeting, and we'll get everyone.
But I'll get you, I can get you copies of those well before the meeting, I can get you copies of those probably tomorrow if you want.
Yeah, so we'll do that.
I'm gonna make a note of that.
So.
Thank you.
Basically, the second read of the policy project, it's, as Superintendent Hashman had said, what we did is, we aligned with the MS.
MASC.
M, E.
MASC.
MASC, yeah. And they're updating all our policies to bring them into the, bring them up to speed, so do you have a motion on that one?
What, all right, what motion are we making right now?
The second read of the policy project, section A, the amendments align with all the update requirements.
You can adopt, sorry, Mr. Chair, you can adopt those if you choose, because they were just, they were basically done for you by a service.
Yeah, all they did was bring it up to.
That's the Mass Association of School Committee.
Yes.
I can make a motion. Stephanie, did you have a question?
No, I was gonna make a.
Go ahead.
You can second.
I second.
Can we do a roll?
Should we make a motion?
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Hatch?
Yes.
Mrs. Mastercola?
Yes.
Mr. Witczek?
Yes.
Mrs. Serena?
Yes.
Was that a motion to adopt these?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to adopt, yes.
Motion to adopt. So the second read of the student records policy, all this was, was bringing this up to, making us legal.
Yep.
Because we were, we were out of compliance with it, so this will serve as a second read for student records policy, JRA.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve student record policy, JRA.
Chair seconds, roll.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Hatch?
Yes.
Mrs. Mastercola?
Yes.
Mr. Witczek?
Yes.
Mrs. Serena?
Yes. Approval of bills dated September 11th, 2025, in the amount of 280,826.
Motion to approve.
Chair seconds, roll.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Hatch?
Yes.
Mrs. Mastercola?
Yes.
Mr. Witczek?
No.
And Mrs. Serena?
Yes. Let's, we, I see we have our principals here, so review of the elementary and secondary school student handbooks. Sure, you guys have questions, you email those to us, so. I don't know, if you guys have anything that you want to add about the handbooks?
I have the principals here, if you guys have any questions.
I don't actually have any questions on it, but I just want to say, you guys really done a great job in the beginning of this year. And again, Mr. Mondello, especially at the vets, you got kids that can't hop out on their own, you need people to help them get out of the cars, and for what it is down there, it's tight down there all the time, you actually keep everybody moving pretty good. So I just want to thank you for your continued, I mean, it's, you did the same thing last year, the year before, but, you know, I know you don't need the thanks, but it's nice to be recognized, you do a great job down there at that. Mr. Blair, like I said, you're doing a great job popping out there and getting things moving, that's, this is what this place needs, is bodies out front, you know? Like I said, for years, I was dropping my daughter off here, and I just couldn't understand why cars would stop over here to let their kids out, and there's nobody in front, so.
It's more than.
Yeah, yeah, it's a work of progress, but you're doing a good job. And I'm gonna say, Dr. Scuzzarella, myself and Mr. Hashman have witnessed it.
Yep.
You being out front, directing traffic, I gotta say, it's.
Brings back some good memories to me.
It's gonna sound very insensitive, it's gonna sound very insensitive, but it's funny to see five foot one out there like this, you know? Right through all these big trucks and everything, and you do a great job. I mean, and the complexes, I, I'm sure you guys have, I don't know if you guys have heard or been up there at all, but it's, it's, it's night and day compared to what it was last year.
Oh, 100%.
You walk in, now you know kids are in class. Before, there was people all over the place, you never knew if they were in class, if they weren't in class. She brought back the breakout spaces. One of my favorites is, if you come to school late and you have a coffee in your hand, it's going in the barrel.
Yeah.
And that's one of my favorite rules, and I love that you enforce that.
Yeah, you have time to get a coffee, you have time to get on to school.
But this is, this is, this is why we've made just difficult decisions over the last few years.
No, 100%.
To get results like this, so I just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, and I've been hearing great things about absenteeism, tardiness is awesome now, so thank you, guys. Anyone else?
And some of Joey's friends are coming home pretty ticked off, so I know that you're doing your job. So thank you.
Yeah.
Yep.
If you ever cross the border, it's what I like.
So we have on the table, review of elementary and secondary school student handbooks, 2526. Do you have a motion?
Anybody have any question?
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the review of the elementary school student handbooks, 2526.
Chair seconds, can we do a roll?
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Hatch?
Yes.
Mrs. Mastercola?
Yes.
Mr. Witczek?
Yes.
Mrs. Serena?
Yes. So next, we have a discussion of.
Sorry, you have to do the secondary one, too. You said elementary.
Oh, we did, elementary and secondary school.
Oh, you did both?
Elementary and secondary.
Yeah, they were both on the same line, so, yeah.
My bad.
Because they're all in the same.
Sorry, my bad.
Yeah, we, we took them together.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have, we've been asked for an exemption of a student admission policy, JF, a valued employee of the school, for her student for pre-K. So this administrator, this administrator is just having an issue placing her student at a school, so she asked if she could place her here, him, the student here, I don't know if it's a male or female. So I said we vote on it, we've done it in the past, and it helps her out, I think it helps us out, but we should absolutely vote on it, so. Any discussion?
I can have a motion to discuss it. No one's making a motion yet.
Do we need a motion to?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, we need a motion to either approve or not approve.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
You know, this is a pretty difficult situation that's been thrown at us kind of last minute. I don't feel I have a lot of information about it. I don't want to kick the can down the road, but I also don't want to arbitrarily deny it.
We can table it.
But I really don't feel that I have enough information. If, if I had to vote on it tonight, just because of the votes that we've taken before, I'd have to vote against it, but that's just a position that I'm in.
So if you want to make a motion to table it, or vote it, like, it's up to you.
I think at this point, I know for myself, I need some more information and really have to look at it because of, again, the votes that we've taken before about school choice and all the hard work we've been doing about trying to limit the classrooms. Like I said, if we have to vote on it, I'd have to vote against it, but I would make a motion to table it till the next meeting.
I have no problem with that, so chair seconds. Fall in favor?
Are we doing a roll?
Are we doing a roll?
Oh, roll?
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Hatch?
Yes.
Mrs. Mastercola?
Yes.
Mr. Witczek?
No.
Mrs. Serena?
Yes. So next, we have approval of eighth grade field trip to Washington DC. This is awesome that it's back.
Yep.
The Washington DC field trip is back, so these kids love this Washington DC field trip, it's, it's awesome. So we have the eighth grade field trip to Washington DC, May. Washington, D.C., May second, um, I believe the cherry blossoms will be out, right?
For sure.
I think it's May, excuse me, I think it's May twelfth to the fifteenth.
Yeah, May twelfth to the fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Yep, twenty twenty-six. That's me.
May twelfth.
The May second was you, the May, the, the twenty twenty-five is me.
May twelfth to the fifteenth, twenty twenty-six. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I was looking at form itself.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Um, review of bus transportation, discussion of open, opening up ridership to non-mandated riders based on seat availability for a fee, um, if anyone has anything they wanna discuss on that, please do.
Yeah, um, I'd like to see some numbers, I mean, you know, we talked about this before, that we cut busing in half, and then we offer no recourse for parents, you know, not even numbers say, hey, this is how much it would cost if we wanted to have individual tickets. Again, you guys know my feelings on this, but the person that makes all these decisions is not here, why?
No, I, Mr. Chair, I can, I can clarify as far as some of the numbers go, just for clarification, so right now-
But, but I think what we need is, we need to see the number of mandated riders, um, who's take, I, 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 I agree with Mr. Wittrich, I think, um, Mrs. Andrews should be here.
We're, we're two weeks into school, like, this, people waited to hear this, and she's not here, I don't understand.
Well, no, I, I, no, pe- people, we've talked about this at the beginning of the budget policy, so this isn't something that's been dropped from people.
No, 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 I mean, like, we haven't met since, you know, before school started.
Yeah.
So here we are, the first meeting for school, people are waiting to hear what's gonna happen with the buses, and we have-
I, I can, I-
A written statement?
I can, I can, I can speak on, on a lot of this, okay? So I met with, I met with the staff as far as the mandatory riders, right now, we're within two or three seats of capacity, um, with students registering on a daily basis. Now, uh, we're talking about the students that have said they wanted a pass, gotten a bus pass, I've asked the principals, and I don't have the data yet because I've asked them to do it this week, to give me a list of who is actually riding versus not riding in the A.M. and the P.M., so in other words, who said they were gonna ride and did or didn't, so that information should be forthcoming. If, so, if we were to get, uh, additional bus, to, uh, to have non-mandated riders ride, then, then the bus would cost a hundred and four thousand, four hundred and fifty. Now, I think one of the misnomers, and I'll just say this, is that in the past, the cost of a bus pass was a hundred and eighty dollars, that by no means covered anywhere near the cost of the bus, it was probably between eight and nine percent of the cost. So that being said, if we were going to get a bus and have families pay for the seat-
How many seats on a bus?
About fifty.
Okay.
The cost would be roughly two thousand dollars a seat.
Correct.
That's, I, that's what I wanted to explain, that's, as far as that goes, I will have the numbers as far as the ridership when I get them from the principals.
Okay.
But then what happens in, when we charge twenty families, let's, whatever, charge twenty families and we get three that pay?
Well, I, I'm, so we need-
Correct.
We need fifty-
Yeah.
Paying riders at two thousand dollars apiece to get another bus.
Right, but Saugus, as we know, has greater than-
I'm just doing the math.
So it's eleven dollars a day?
Is that what it, yep.
Hundred eighty days, eleven dollars a day.
Yep.
Okay, so that's, what, five fifty a ride? Put it to the parents, see if they wanna do it, you know what I mean? I don't know.
Can I ask a question for the, for the process? So let's say you found fifty families in town who want, who are willing to pay, that's one bus, but the bu- they live all over town, so that's, that's not one bus route that does a pickup literally all fifty, so you need two buses to, to make that route work, so to speak.
Well, you're not just adding a route, you're, you're adding a bus.
Right.
So those buses will still go to the same places.
Yeah.
And still pick up the same places, you know what I mean?
They double the route.
Yeah, you'd just be adding more people, so it's, not like you take all the people and put them on one day.
I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know what you're saying, too, yeah.
That what we would be getting by doing that is fifty more available seats.
Right.
So in that, in that sense, we redistribute the routes-
Right.
So that that would happen.
Got it.
And how long is the list, is the wait, how long?
We didn't do a waitlist at this point in time because we didn't think, we were at the position right now of, we were not, we were gonna fill the buses that we had with mandated riders, and that's where we're at.
And like I said at the beginning, just so people understand, we don't decide who mandated riders are, that's the state, the state decides mandated riders. We don't decide how far you live from a school, the state decides that, the state says it's two miles, the mandatory, the mandated rider-
To sixth grade, right? To sixth grade?
To sixth grade, correct.
To sixth grade. That blows my mind, that, we, again, none of us agree with it, we don't think that if somebody lives two miles away, the bus picks them up, and their seventh grade brother can't get on with them, that's, we all think it's absolutely ridiculous, we do.
Yeah.
You know?
We absolutely do, and we'll, like, like I said at the beginning, is, it's a problem, we'd love to hear a solution.
But again, as long as we have some, something to put out to the parents, you know?
Yeah.
I don't think five fifty is unreasonable for a ride, it's cheaper than everything, you know, but I know you have to get that amount of, like, kids to, to pay.
Correct, no.
But again, if it's a little more work for somebody, I'm all for it, you know?
No, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah. But again, I, I don't mean to jump down your throat, you do a great job, enormous porter yards.
No, no worries.
But I get very frustrated when we're looking for answers and looking for people to answer them, we don't get paid, these people get paid a lot of money to make these decisions, and I wanna see their faces here at these meetings, you know what I mean? When we have questions, I want somebody in front of me answering the questions, I'm sure, I can't be alone on that, right?
No, I, I, I agree with you.
Okay.
It's, it's, especially being the first, uh, week of school, first meeting of the first week.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, um, we, we shouldn't be guessing, so, um, when, we're not gonna vote on that right now, I think we need more, um, questions answered, as far as the other thing, too, is, what, it's great that a mandatory ride takes a pass, but when I see a bus pull up to a school to drop kids off and it's half full-
Oh, yeah.
That's where my problems lie.
Well, they, Mr. Chair, that's why I've asked the principals to get, not, not only how many students are on each bus, but who's getting on and off the bus.
Yeah.
So that we can track who's actually using it and not.
I will say that, um, that Ms. Vargas over there, she's done a great job fielding the calls and everything else, cause I know there's been a lot of calls coming your way.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
And she's looking for solutions, too, is what I like, so thank you.
And Mr. Chair, one of the things that we've done before is, we'll look at a particular bus, and we'll say, okay, there's so many kids on the bus, but there's always gonna be kids who don't show up one day who call, who, who aren't there.
Right.
So we can, we can allow more children on the bus with the expectation that, cause like the chair said, sometimes you see a bus that's three quarters full.
We will, Mr. Chair, and I, I wanna thank Ms. Mrs. Vargas, who, who did all this work, and we actually sat down today trying to see if we can, cause, try to get the buses here at the right times, too. Cause they're, like, they're caught in the same traffic as everybody else, actually, they're caught in different traffic than everybody else, cause they're actually going north on Route One-
Yeah.
At times when everybody else is going a different direction, but we're, we're, we're trying to game plan, I just wanna ask her, we, I didn't misstate anything, I got every, all, yeah, I thought I had, I was just making sure I was remembering everything correctly.
Well, the other thing I want people to understand, too, is, like, I travel a little a lot for work, so I'm out on the west coast, I'm at, Saugus was founded in sixteen twenty-nine, the roads were not made for the traffic we have.
No, you go to, you go to one of those-
They were all harsh roads.
If you go to one of those communities that was developed with a plan-
Oh, yeah.
It's a way, it's much different.
Way different, that's-
I noticed that, I noticed that in Louisville, where they have four-lane, one-way streets.
Correct.
Sometimes it feels like you leave in nineteen twenty-nine by the time you get to the school, so.
So, um, we'll, 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 uh, take this up next meeting.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to send out a survey?
Yes, if you could, that'd be great.
Who would be interested if it costs, fill in the blank?
Yeah.
And would you like me to break it down similarly to, like, I know if I say it's two thousand dollars a seat, that's one way of looking at it, you'd like me to kinda break it down?
If you break it down to five fifty a ride, you know?
No, 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 right.
Cause you know what, and Ms. Vargas is right, there should be, we should offer a morning bus and afternoon bus, if, if people in the morning aren't taking the bus, and there's only forty people on there, but in the afternoon are taking the bus home, I get it, but at least try to offer that morning spot if we have more.
So I will get the information from the principals as to which riders are and which riders are not riding.
Yeah.
And I will get a survey together, and I'll run it by you and let you take a look and make sure I word it correctly.
And I'll say it again, we say it all the time to the people at home, just come to the meeting, you know, I don't, I'm not gonna look on Facebook and see a, um, a petition, I appreciate you guys do that stuff, but it's just so much easier to come here and just talk at public comment, we're gonna listen, we may not be able to talk back all the time, well, Vinnie sometimes does, but, but, uh, the rest-
That's supposed to talk back.
But we, um, but we'll definitely work on a solution, that's what we do, so.
Yep.
Yeah, it, it, and-
Appreciate it.
I, I think the one thing is, is that we're always, everyone up here is always accessible, you can call us, text us, whatever, and, and we'll tell you, and really is, we, we are trying to find out who's on the bus, who's not on the bus, so we can get more kids on the bus.
And I, I do appre- I do appreciate everybody's passion, I know we had to make some difficult decisions with what we had, and it is what it is, and nobody was happy with some of the deci- some, you know, depending on what decisions you make, not everybody's gonna be happy, and I think we did the best we could to save programs that we had, not lose programs, but again, I, I will, uh, get you, uh, try to put together a survey, and as soon as I get it from my principals, I'll get you the number, the number of riderships and that kinda breakdown for us.
Excellent, I appreciate it, so, um, the next is approval of mass cultural council notification for creative experiences for five thousand dollars. This is, um, Christie Baker and Kelly Donahue, they do a great job in stuff like this, so it's, uh, Curious Creatures, um, Johnny K, um, Magicians, it's, it's really cool that they do all this stuff, um, so, if there's any questions.
Mr. Chair, I wanna thank them both for their letter, and, um, I just read it as we were, uh-
And they did apologize they couldn't.
Yeah, yeah, they had the open house, I, um, I wanna make a motion to approve.
Uh, Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
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 It's money.
Or do you wanna do it?
Yeah, we gotta do a roll.
Oh, do a roll.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Hatch?
Yes.
Mrs. Mastercola?
Yes.
Mr. Wittrich?
Yes.
Mr. Serena?
Yes.
Thank you.
Approval of school committee meeting minutes for August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, executive session.
Motion to approve?
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Approval of school committee meeting minutes, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, open session.
Uh, motion to approve.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Abstain.
Abstain, I wasn't there either.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
That's right.
Me as well.
It was a three P. Um, public comment.
No, he's not going up.
He's leaving.
Public comment, anyone? Anyone, Pula?
I'll say something.
There you go.
Oh, boy.
I took down some notes, so this is good.
And so it begins.
So I, I think, to Mr. Wittrich's point, I agree that complaining doesn't help, so I wrote down some ideas as I was listening.
Well, no, it does help.
It does.
Well, first you have to tell us your name and address.
Petitions don't help.
You have to tell us your name and address. But, but I, I wrote down some, some questions, I guess, and some thoughts that I had, so I think the cost of two thousand could be doable by some people, that's great, but I guess one question I have is, what we should think about is, can we actually exclude mandated riders, even if they don't get on the bus, like, are we allowed to do that, so if they get a seat, can we exclude them? Cause what if they show up and you told someone else they could get on, could be an issue.
We cannot exclude them.
So that was, that was the first thing I thought of, and then the second thing I thought of is, like, I think there's an opportunity to maybe do an analysis, and I don't know where it'll put us, but it's worth an analysis, of, I Googled, how much does a bus cost? I, so, don't hold me to any of these numbers, it was like two hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand for a bus, so then it made me think, well, we also rent buses for sports, we also rent buses for band, we also rent buses to go on field trips, so we probably pay a lot for that, so maybe there's an opportunity to just do an analysis around if the town owns some buses, you know, the employees wouldn't be full-time employees, forget, I know people are gonna say benefits for employees, they're part-time employees, they wouldn't need that, so the powers that be, if they maybe did that analysis and looked at the money that's going out, across everything that we use a bus for, like, talking everything we use a bus for in town, and the hundred thousand it costs per bus, so three hundred thousand a year, what, how long to make that back, right? So in, if it's nine hundred thousand for three buses, you know, uh, in three years we make it back, right? So I mean, just things to think about, like, I think it's worth doing just a, like a, not, not, not a crazy analysis.
We can, we've done it in the past.
Yeah, we've actually talked about that in the past, yeah.
It's the liability.
Yeah, yeah, there's probably crazy insurance, right?
Yeah.
So, that's, factor that in, right?
We have insurance, they have...
And then, this was just another one that came to my mind, and I don't know if it's a good one, but it's a suggestion. So, there's a bus, I used to take the bus to Boston every day, I did it for like a week, and then it wasn't fun, but... It comes right down Main Street, like, an MBTA bus. I don't know, like, is there a student program where some of the kids that live on Main Street or Clifton Dale, they could jump on that bus, because it's going to the school, jump off at the corner and walk, like, just an option, right? So, I think we look at MBTA discounts.
We do that, there's an MBTA discount for that, so we can, we can look at that.
Yeah, we can look at, absolutely.
Some kids do ride it, there's not many, there's, I see them getting off right out that, the most dangerous crosswalk in America right there. I see them getting off there, you know?
Yeah, it's a tough place to cross.
Yeah, well, you know what, we've talked about putting the flashlights there, but apparently it's...
Right as you come out of...
Right at the Pierce Memorial.
Oh, I got it, I, yeah, I see, I know what I'm talking about.
It makes my heart skip, I see people whip down there and the kids are crossing, I'm like, oh my God. But we need a flashing light there, but they say it's the state that's in charge of that for some reason, I don't know how, or possible. Yeah, but it's not the old pass, it's past Pierce Memorial, heading, it's on Main Street. The crosswalk is on, if you're coming down Pierce, it's on the right-hand side. You know what I mean? So, but I honestly think that we need something there, because we're...
But these are great ideas, like, this is, this is, this is what...
You should run for school committees, what you should do.
Maybe, maybe I'll think about it. And then, just to plug Shannon, she had sent over a, like, a grant that you could get for safer streets, right?
Yeah, yeah.
We looked into it, I, I sent it, well, I called Wendy, she talked to me, which, I don't know if she wanted to, but she did. And then, she sent me over to Brendan, I reached out to Brendan, he sent me an engineering. So, because of Shannon, I just, I told her I could send the emails, this was not me. I, I reached out, and now the engineering department's looking at, maybe if there's something we can get in a grant form to make it a little bit safer, and maybe put a flashing light, or a sign, or like, something that says, slow down, footbridge. So, I don't know, more to come on that.
Please, please, slow down.
That's it, sorry.
It is, because people don't look, they look this way, that way, you know?
Thanks.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Wendy does like talking to you.
See, that's different than you told me at the beginning.
Hi, guys, so just to echo what Brian said, it's called Safe Roads to School. What do you need?
Name and address.
Shannon McCarthy, 1400 Ave, Precinct 6. Safe Roads to Schools is a grant, so it is a grant for infrastructure, and it's funded by the state, so there's a lot to it that need to be looked into, but I can't think of a better place than Sogus, especially over in that area to kind of help build for the students. So, that's that. As far as busing goes, not an expert on busing, but just based on everything, one suggestion is, have we looked at the size of the busing we're using? So, if we're using these big gargantuan buses, and they're only half-filled, is it more cost-effective to use smaller buses in some areas? I, I don't know the answer to that question, but maybe that's something to look into. And then, with the MBTA program, I know cities like Medford, for example, they have extra MBTA buses come in during school hours to kind of help offset some of that. I don't know what our student population is in terms of the age group, and if it even makes sense to explore that, if they're younger kids.
We have explored it in the past, and we got it shut down. It wasn't, so, we can do, explore it again.
Yeah, I mean, I just know the community is so different, right? Like, things are changing rapidly every year, so just something for, like, as another idea from a solution standpoint. And then, also thinking about, I just lost my train of thought with the busing. I can share with you that I know people are using Ubers to get their kids to school in parts of the community. So, I think $5 a day is more than reasonable, because people are already spending that and likely spending a lot more. And, I mean, it's a huge safety concern, I'm fortunate I'm not put in that situation to put my child in an Uber, and I'm really, really grateful for it. But, you know, for me, that is definitely something to think about.
So, the other thing we're looking at is, the town's looking at is getting spaces for electric bikes. So, if they take their electric bikes to school, they can put them in a safe spot, charge them during school. So, we're, we're looking at different things. And like I said, these, these things, this is what we love, is solutions, right? We gotta look into everything we can.
Yeah, you're welcome. I mean, I hope, you know, my kids are still very little, they're three and five, so I'm a long way away from the Belmonte, the middle high school. I live in a place that I can walk. Yeah, I know, I mean, you know, the days are long, with the years are short, is what I keep getting told. But, you know, I hope that it's safer over there by the time my little girl gets up there, because the idea of her walking across that bridge, or I see these kids in it, I like grip the wheel every time I come around there at that time. So, you know, whatever solutions are on the table, I think are great and worth exploring, because...
My biggest bugaboo is the parents dropping the kids off at the off-ramp on the arm ramp. I'm like, dude, what are you doing?
For sure, for sure.
Like, what are you doing? The kids open the door right on the, the off-ramp, I'm like...
Yeah.
All you need is like an AT wheel to turn the corner at the same time, like, dude.
Well, and to your point, the, the town was not built for, you know, the way the community is now, so there's a lot of new options to look at. And then, finally, to move on from the busing, I will speak on behalf of the pre-K, because my daughter is in the vets. And I know you're gonna go, and you're gonna discuss this and vote, but I will say that I know many families in this community that were scrambling at the end of the summer because of a placement issue for their children. So, I would ask that you consider that before you allow somebody who is not paying taxes in this town to enter our schools.
100%, thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
And we'll say also, we, you know, we discussed before, like, a ride bike to school day and stuff like that. I don't even know if we can pull it off with, because these roads aren't really rider-friendly, unfortunately, you know?
No, they're not, they barely fit two cars on.
Yeah, and, yeah, it's, I don't know, I don't know what the solution is, but we're just gonna keep pecking away at it until we come up with something that's at least halfway decent.
But I'd say to both of you guys, thank you for coming, and thank you for, for the input, because...
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You know, it, this is what we talk about, right, is come and be part of the solution. Like, you got five guy, you five people up here thinking different things.
Five guys, not long.
But we don't know, you know what I'm saying? So, I, we appreciate it, thank you very much. Tina, you usually have something. No?
Well, Panos, no?
Yeah, I hear, you...
He's a man of few words.
Yeah. So, next, we'll be recessing to executive session for the purpose of negotiations, not returning to open session. It'll be the committee, Sue and Mike, and...
Motion to approve?
Chair seconds, all in favor?
You gotta do a roll call.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Hatch?
Yes.
Mrs. Mastropola?
Yes.
Mr. Whitridge?
Yes.
Mrs. Serena?
Yes.